Well, just like I said, I'm just gonna give it a few minutes, but we can at least introduce. So I'm gonna call the, this is the Nottingham Planning Board meeting. It's non-business. It's for Wednesday, March 16th, 2022. I'm gonna start on my right with Mr. Anderson to introduce ourselves, please.
Gary Anderson.
Edward Veal.
Susan Mooney.
Ian McKinnon.
Charlene Anderson.
So we have a few, this is a non-business meeting, meaning we're not hearing applications or cases tonight. It's just to our formation meeting after elections have occurred. And thank you to the town and everybody for re-electing me for another three years. And I was officially sworn in earlier tonight, so I'm official. And I guess I'll just get to thank yous out of the way first. There's a big thank you to our town election workers and volunteers. It was a long night and long day for them, and they did it impeccably again. And I also want to thank our outgoing chairperson, Dirk Grotenheis. He served on this board for, I think, a dozen years. And he, many of those, he served as the chair, leading, leading our meetings and doing so very evenly and fair. And I, again, I wanted just to extend a big thank you, a lot of gratitude for myself and, and on behalf of the town and the citizens for his, his service there. So we'll give it till one more minute and, and otherwise we will move on with the agenda.
So may I ask a non-business, non-planning board question?
Sure.
What's the full moon tonight called? Does anybody know? The next, the next one, the next one is the pink moon, and the one after that is the strawberry moon. What's this one?
Rose.
(laughing). Oh.
Is that the spring?
I'll look it up when I go home.
Oh, okay. It's spring. I don't think it's around the.
So you're gonna laugh if it's called the rose moon.
It is not. It is not the, not the wolf, not the sturgeon, not the.
Beaver is like October, I think. Beaver is in like the fall, I think.
Yeah. This one I always forget.
These are the, these are the kind of things that we have to, that take up the most of our meetings here.
Sat, sat moon.
All right. So it's after, no, I'm sorry. It is after, it's 7:05, so we'll move on with the election, new planning board member introduction. We have one new member that doesn't appear here tonight. So the next item on the agenda would be election of planning board officers.
But was the new member notified? Do we know if the new member's been sworn in?
I have not heard anything from.
Is this her name?
Yeah, yeah, she's got a.
Go over and check.
I believe so, and the agenda was online and posted for tonight. So I did not have any contact information for the individual, so. So go ahead with the election of planning board officers. We usually start with chair, vice chair, and then secretary are the three officer positions that we have. Duties of the chair generally include running the, the meetings, assisting with the town staff with, and coordinating some different things with legal and town administrator and such. In their absence, the vice chair steps in and runs the meetings and does all the other functions. And lastly, secretary also is there to fill in and assist with minutes and other duties as need be. So.
Nominations.
So Mr. Veal, if you're comfortable being nominated for chair, I so, I do so.
Second.
Is there any further, further comment?
Of three?
Oh, of four, sir.
Okay.
I agree with it.
Yeah. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Myself.
Congratulations, sir.
Motion carries, it's unanimous.
You had.
Thank you all for that vote of confidence. I'll speak, speak a little bit more in a moment. The next seat would be the vice chair.
I nominate Ian McKinnon if he so wishes to be vice chair.
I'll second.
We have a motion, a second. Is there any further discussion?
Or is Ian up for it?
Yeah, I guess that would be a good, that would be a good.
Oh, we're supposed to ask him, right? I forgot.
He doesn't have a choice.
Mr. McKinnon, would you be willing to serve in that position?
Yeah.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. And third position would be the position of secretary.
I'll nominate Sue Mooney.
Can I just say something?
Oh.
Yes.
But that, thank you, thank you, Charlene. There's been a couple of times in the past where there has been no chair or vice chair present. And I'm not comfortable conducting a meeting without a lot of support. And I wonder if we couldn't break up the secretary position into an executive secretary who would step in in the absence of chair and vice chair, and a corresponding secretary that would do minutes, take minutes at sidewalks, do all of the other stuff that secretary secretaries do rather than administer.
So it would be a little bit, they're going away from our bylaws a little bit.
Well, we can always amend them.
We could, we might tonight.
Yeah, as I say, Gary brought it up, so we'd have, we would have to update the bylaws. I would just have to check. I don't know if our, if the positions are actually locked by, or set by RSA or.
Yeah, I don't know. That's the thing we'd have to look at.
I think chair and vice chair by RSA, may for secretary.
Yeah, I think it's just digging up from there.
But it's not a prohibited.
Well, no.
Could be cash.
Also, the, in reading our bylaws, so if our, if the, it reads, if the secretary was not present, that the board would vote in somebody to stand in as chair.
That is correct.
So that could always happen, especially if, even if the secretary was present and the board was.
Yeah, that could probably be the better way to do it, now that we know that you're not comfortable with it.
I guess the hope is that we wouldn't be in that situation, but I mean certainly you could have that as a policy.
Here we go. 673-8 organization. Each land use board may, board shall elect its chairperson from the appointed or elected members and may create other offices as it deems necessary. So.
That's true. I've definitely been before boards where it's only one official person.
Yeah.
To that end, would we need to, is there anything in our bylaws that we would need to amend as to just the process around?
We'd have to, the officers and their duties, and then election of officers. I think we'd have to amend quite a bit, which is fine, I mean, we're in that position.
Yeah, I didn't mean to throw a monkey wrench.
It's, it's, no, I appreciate you being honest, obviously.
But also, I think that the integrity of the board needs to have somebody who is comfortable carrying a meeting such as Charlene, with her experience on the select board, I can say that, Charlene, that I did.
I didn't hear you say that.
So it might just create a, I don't know, is it like?
An executive secretary?
Well, yeah, I mean, what we could, what we could do is just go ahead and nominate you as a secretary, then work on the bylaws and put something in those bylaws that would address that. So, so we're not holding up the election of the officers.
Okay.
And then that gives us time to kind of write up the bylaws and.
And, and for you to consider.
Or Gary, because Gary also was a select board member and was a chair.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, I mean, it could just be the fallback that the, you said the language said, or someone else, right?
Just doing it appropriately.
I mean, really, it would fall to whoever, assuming there's a quorum that night, it would fall to quorum ultimately to vote.
Yeah.
Yeah, at the time, yeah.
And I think we can look at the minutes, because it may be even that you can designate, we'd have to reread our bylaws fully to find that nuance and see if we have that in there. It's just to see if there's a, if it's in there where you can appoint the chair, the acting chair that night, you know, to take over your capacity. Well, we'll see. So we do have a motion by Charlene. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. McKinnon. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries, five zero zero. Well, thank you, Sue. And I'm just gonna take a second, just, I think the way Dirk and Mr. Grotenheis had conducted the meetings was exemplary. I kind of have a different style. I still want to be fair and impartial for everybody. That's, that's, you know, obviously my goal. I do tend to talk a lot, I bring up a lot of points for discussion during meetings. And I don't want that to anyway come across as me trying to, you know, forcing you into a decision. And so I like to bring up a lot of things based on our zoning or in our subdivision regulations. If I see it in there, I usually think it warrants a discussion. And that's why I bring it up. It's not to necessarily say I feel strongly this way or this way, but I feel like if it's in our, in our subdivision regs, your zoning ordinance or site plan, that we should at least discuss it. And so I don't want anybody to feel that if I'm talking a lot up here, that it means you don't have a voice, you have less of a voice.
No, as usual, you're always welcome and respect and admire the fact that you come with a lot of knowledge to bring to the table. So don't hesitate to do what you feel is.
Just leads us into the right discussions.
Yeah, yeah. But also you bring up points that some of us have overlooked, like what if? And I appreciate that perspective.
Or it's led to, do we consider changes to our regulations if it finds holes?
So the next on our, our agenda would be the review of the planning board bylaws. We do have a copy in our minute, in our folders, but it's, we believe it's actually an older copy that we amended last year. So we're gonna get those, what we're, what the plan is, is Kevin is gonna send out the edited amended version from last year to everybody electronically. So we have a time, a chance to reread them. And the goal would be for the next meeting on the 23rd, which is one week away, for everybody to refresh themselves with this. And then if there's any additional changes, we can make them that night and either adopt them that night or, you know, at the, at the next meeting. But we definitely want to make sure we get them readopted. It's generally, even if we make no changes, we generally readopt them every year, just to show that we're still operating under that set of rules. One other item that's in our, our folders tonight is a good, really good refresher. Ms. Mooney had found and shared, it's the Riggins Rules. So planning boards and other commissions often will operate under the Riggins Rules. I reread this, and I think there are a lot of, it's a little bit dated now. This was from almost 30 years ago, but most of the points are still very, very relevant today. So I reread these, and there was a lot of things that kind of came up and it's like, oh, yeah, maybe we want to reincorporate that or do this a little bit differently. So I do encourage everybody to, to reread those. You can leave them in your folders, you always have them, if you want to refer to them.
Are these things that we should, we should review and that we may want to incorporate in the bylaws, you're saying? Or just are these, I've never heard of the Riggins Rules, so.
Riggins Rules are procedures. It's, it's just a, so a lot of that is probably where some, most of our bylaws came from. But it's generally just a guide for, for board. So yeah, I would say take a look at those either before or after reading the bylaws. I think there may be some points in there that are good to reincorporate or just a reminder of, you know, be on time. Number three. I think everybody here is, is always on time, and I appreciate that, and a few other things, you know.
How about number four? I like that one. Don't dress like a bum, shave, wear a tie, and remember that a coat is never out of place.
Yeah. So, yeah.
Yeah, a little dated.
Well.
Yeah, I was going through, I do like all of them. I think one that is important, I mean, some of them are, I guess, more personal.
Oh, dress like a bum.
Personal procedures, but I do like some of the ones when they get into the procedure of the meeting.
Yep.
I don't remember which number it is. Essentially, if somebody, if somebody's speaking before the board, make sure they're not speaking from the crowd.
Yep.
Make sure they're, and I know Dirk did a good job.
Twenty-three.
Sometimes hard, it's hard to sit, stand next to an applicant and not kind of look at somebody and speak to them. I understand that's, it, I've been in that case as well, but that's a hard, and.
And in case, tell, saying that to them, that you need to address the chair.
And I think. I think as long as we continue to reiterate, except Dirk would kind of, if you saw enough of people in the crowd, kind of reiterate that rule. And I guess that's a hard one to.
And it's good.
He wouldn't even say that.
It's up to us, too, to help the chair if we see that going.
Yeah.
You know, to just point of order.
Exactly.
For the chair.
That's a good point. You can always interrupt and say point of order.
Yeah, because sometimes it does get a little loose, and yeah, people are from the crowd, or the applicants are still at the table, and they really should be removed from the table so that people can come up and speak without feeling, well, so they direct comments this way for one. Like you said, it's hard if they're still there.
And we're seeing a lot more applications, so you're gonna have more potential for more of better feedback for or against. So it's important to, whether it's for or against, they have to still follow that same procedure.
Yep.
I did have one, might sound, one change, I think, one maybe change in the bylaws that only came up because I happen to know the clerk.
Yep.
And, and so, you know, there's several areas, well, starting mainly Article Six. The clerk, the clerk, you know, repeated. And I just thought it might make sense to put in, instead of the clerk, the land use clerk. And it's a minor, minor adjustment, but.
Is that one of the edits we talked about last year?
That might be, that might be one of the edits, because we changed the, I think we changed the title.
Yeah, it's on the updated one, yeah.
But if not, I'll, I'll circle that, just to make sure that, in the edited version, that that's a, that we've addressed that, that is important, yeah, because the, the town clerk. Yeah, exactly. See. So, so again, yeah, so everybody, 323, be prepared to kind of review those, adopt, readopt them, or edit them as, as much as possible. The next item is not on the agenda, but we did have someone volunteer to become an alternate for, for the planning board. The individual is here tonight, so I'll go ahead and welcome you to the table if you could, and introduce yourself and give a little bit of background and. Yep.
I'm Sandra Jones. I ran as a writing candidate for the planning board, and someone else did too, and she was the winner, so she will be the member of the planning board. But I have been very interested in doing that, so I am seeking a position as an alternate. I was on the planning board in the late eighties, in mid, late eighties, right after I moved to town. The first thing I did when I moved to town was run for state representative and knock on every door in town so that I could get to know and feel a part of the community. And a gentleman who was very much a part of the planning board and zoning, was a neighbor, and he met me walking and said, if you really want to be involved, why don't you try to be on the planning board? This is going to be an opening. And so I went to the selectman at that time, it was an appointed position, and I was. And I served for several years. I was chair for several years, and eventually resigned to go back to school and get my master's in counseling. And currently, I'm on the budget committee and have, I've just been re-elected to my second term on the budget committee. But I'm very, I, I really became most interested in doing this when I attended a hearing for my neighbor Roger Devens, who was getting a subdivision, and it just seemed so familiar. And I actually, after all those years, I knew what you all were talking about, which was interesting to me, too. And I thought, oh, that's, that's important, because there's so much going on now, and I am so interested in just orderly group, growth, and, and doing it in a plan, in a really plan, and, I don't know exactly the word I want to use, strategic or just a really focused way. And it's very important that people be very aware of enforcing the regulations. I think that the early years when I was there, when we were very much sticklers for following the regulations, really helped us in the later years when the water bottling plant was coming here, and there was no precedent that they could find where we showed favoritism to townspeople. We never did that. Nor have we done it since, I don't believe. And so that, that was very helpful. And I was interested in from the questions, and people were just, Roger is a long-term, long-term member of the town, and he was getting the same questions as anybody would get, and wondering why, and I liked that, and I, I want to be a part of it.
And, and I believe you were on the ballot for budget committee as well?
I am, I am on the budget committee.
You are on the budget committee, okay.
And I do not believe that there's any conflict of interest of my being on the budget committee and being here. I thought about that, but there's just, there are apples and oranges.
Yep, nope, that's, it's land use board, it's generally where we can, and the select board, that you can only, we can only have one from each.
And I'm retired now, so I have the time to do this. And I'm not a retired person who really wants to sit home and knit. I don't know how to knit, so that's not there.
Right. Did anybody have any questions for Ms. Jones?
Glad to see the interest there, because it's important to have, in my opinion, a full roster of alternates. Even if you're not appointed to, I guess, a voting seat that night, it's, I'm always a fan of having the most input, whether somebody has a voting position that night or not, so.
And I, as I, as I was talking to Susan earlier, I, I, as an alternate, intend to attend every meeting possible, because I really feel that it's important, and I'm glad that the alternates sit at the table and are allowed to participate in the discussion with everyone else. At least that's what I was hearing. And because when it comes time to vote on anything, it's most important that everyone voting really knows everything about it. I wouldn't be happy if I had a petition before and somebody was voting who had never been at a meeting before.
Yeah, and that is, that is part of best practice from New Hampshire Municipal Association and OSI, which I think changed its name again.
It did?
Office of Strategic Initiatives, which I think is something else now, with the planning board guides that they, they hand out, is that, yes, alternates and all members, you know, should attend as much as possible so they can fill in right away.
Obviously, somebody gets sick, or somebody takes a vacation and does that, and I will, too.
And, and we, and we did check, and it is okay. So we do encourage, you know, we do sit everybody at the table. We usually have alternates sitting at the table to my right at the far end, and then we clearly identify who's, if anybody's seated that night and voting, or not. But so we do, we do have everybody at the table. I think, you know, it's outlined, usually after a motion is made, that's usually when alternates no longer provide input, but all the way up through the discussions up until that point, they do. So.
Our bylaws provide, I noticed, you know, for up to five alternates, which would be amazing, because I don't think I've seen that yet.
No.
I think we need another table.
We've had two once in a while, but it's usually, Mr. Davies has been the heavy lifter there for many years for us. So in our bylaws, the way alternates are appointed is up to five members for terms of three years each, which shall be staggered. We only have one, so we don't have to worry about the staggering at this time, because it would be staggered automatically. So if nobody else has any questions, would anybody like to make a motion?
I move that we nominate Sandra Jones as alternate for the planning board to serve a three-year term.
Second.
A motion by Ms. Mooney, a second by Mr. Anderson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries, unanimously, five zero. Welcome to the board, Ms. Jones.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Before the next meeting, you'll just have to go to the town clerk and, and get sworn in.
Absolutely.
She's working tonight.
And I noticed that you had folders with bylaws and things like that in it, so I would like copies of that if possible.
Yeah, Kevin can help you with that.
So.
If you want, follow along, I think he did get sworn in.
So Kevin's pretty great about.
Last year's planning book, so sorry about that, because there's a lot of.
Kevin's pretty great about preparing these items for us, and then he'll email, he'll add you to our email list. Again, we try not to reply all on any emails to avoid any, any problems there, but he'll send out the edited version that was amended last year, and we'll have that for next, next week. And that reminds me, actually, there's a few other positions which we can either vote on tonight or vote on at the next meeting, but usually we appoint someone as our SRPC rep, a CIP rep, and I think a budget committee rep, I think are the three.
I think we're, we're on the SRPC till, I'm on, listed on there is till 2024, but I guess.
There were a couple, nice two years at a time.
Yeah, it's either a two or a three-year period or something like that.
Guess your ball's still stuck?
I'll just look at the dates.
We can always make it, make it official again from our side, and then we can vote on that tonight or, or at a future meeting. Just remember that usually appoint a CIP rep and a budget committee rep, if I remember, who is the alternate?
Yes.
It's okay.
So for the website, Gary is set until 2023, Charlene sets at 2024. That's for the website.
Oh, I saw that, thanks.
Is, is that for the reps at SRPC?
Yeah, that's what they've got us listed as. Like, so I think it's a term, like, that you're on it.
Yeah, it's like a three-year term, I believe.
So it's not like an officer that you would get voted every year?
No.
That's interesting, okay.
It's through the selectmen.
Oh, okay.
They have to approve that.
Can you say, we have a budget for anyone? I don't know if we vote or.
I believe so.
No, we don't know.
I'm sorry, it's just CIP.
CIP.
CIP and SRPC, right?
But, but Sandra certainly would represent our.
That was, that's where, that's where I was leaning. So we don't have to do that tonight, but if you want to think about it. So normally, we'd appoint a person to be our CIP rep. Obviously, that doesn't get, get active until much later in the year, when the CIP takes off. But, but we do usually have someone on that. So Ms. Jones, I don't know if you, you want to think about that one, potentially being the, the planning board's representative on the CIP committee?
Yes, there are plenty, pardon me?
I don't know if you'd, if you'd want some time, or if you want, if you'd be willing to be the planning board's representative for the CIP committee, that might be.
Could I do that as an alternate? Oh, yeah, yes.
So would anybody like to make a motion on that?
I nominate Sandra Jones as our planning board rep for the CIP committee.
We have a second?
I'll second.
That's a motion by Ms. Mooney, second by Ms. Anderson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries, five zero. Thank you for, for that. And if something happens, obviously, it's months from now, so if it becomes too much with the budget committee, planning board, and that, just let us know.
Right. So the, well, on the budget committee, I've been on the school facilities committee for, therefore, the last couple of years, and I, I may not continue with that, because I think we need fresh voices and things to there. But Michelle King has been on CIP, so she'll probably stay there, so it'll be comfortable for me to be there.
Brings us into the other business, which I think we kind of just tackled. Public comment, even, we always reserve a time during our meetings for anybody, any member from the public to come in and, and talk to us. If it's about a specific property, project, or application, we obviously can't, can't discuss it at that time. But general questions and, and things like that of planning board zoning nature, we can, we can, we can entertain. We do have a couple sets of minutes we can tackle tonight, or we can leave until the next meeting.
Mr. Chair, can I, can I butt in?
You're sure.
And just do a couple of other others before we address minutes?
Of course.
Okay. It came to my attention going to a select board meeting a couple weeks ago, that some people, some residents are concerned about salt application on their roads. And the couple that spoke, or the fellow that spoke, lives in an aquifer protection overlay district on, on Kelsey Road. And I contacted him later, and he told me what had transpired and showed me the salt that was, the rock salt that was laid down by his house, and was, he was very concerned because they have dug, they haven't dug well, as we all do. So I contacted SR, Stratford Regional Planning Commission to see if any local areas had any, anything in their regs about restricted salt usage over aquifers. And SRPC did not have any information. They did send me. And SRPC did not have any information. They did send me, just did send me some links that were.
Some steerers.
Yeah, yeah, there were really nothing there.
It's more of a.
So I reached out to Durham, the town of Durham, because the salt study was done several years ago. A lot of the data came from Durham and it showed that a good percentage of, of wells in Durham had been destroyed by salination. So I've been back and forth corresponding with a fellow who is the town planner, Michael Barrett. And he sent me a copy of their aquifer zone and in that aquifer zone, there was language for less salt usage in aquifer, aquifer zone areas. So I sent that to a couple people on the board, but not everybody. But I wonder if Kevin would send that to everybody. But I'd like the board to consider adopting some of this language next year when we amend our regulations to address aquifer protection.
I did read through this and I've actually encountered this before, have to review terms, right? Is there a certain, is, do you know if there's a certain point in it that you wanted to bring attention to? Because, I mean, it's not a very long, it's probably similar length to our offer overlay.
Um, Kevin, did you?
Use of deicing chemicals, there's, there's a small paragraph, D.
Yes, I do.
Page three.
Sorry.
It's not very, just as it's a.
Yeah, okay, that's what I was.
Yeah, I think, I think this would be a good thing for everybody to read and, and keep in mind as we go forward and this is something we can make sure that our, SRPC rep, sorry, writer Blair, Mr. Haney, gets a copy of and he can see where, how easy we could adopt pieces of this in.
And one, so one thing I've noticed in my experience coming across the regulations of different towns is even like where, I guess you could say, a little bit more inland from the coast, but there, I, I'll double check, but I believe a couple of the Rocky County communities do have a little bit more knowledge. I want to, I have to confirm that and I might be able to look this up. I believe the town of Strawn does because they have a pretty involved environmental group and the public works there is, is great. The road, I guess the issue they were talking about, it was, it was essentially salting by the town. It wasn't private salting?
No, no, it was salting by the town and it was not, it was not a mix. It was just straight rock salt.
Yeah.
To the point where the fellow went out and stopped Kevin, the salt spreader and said, what are you doing? Because the road, the storm had passed, the road was dry and they were just laying down another bunch of salt, a lot.
Yeah, so there's, and that program kind of goes into, I know, was it Blair that had sent you to some of the links? Was that you were conversing with?
It was Jen.
Jen. The state has some different guidelines, like when we go for a state permit, you do have, like I, I, a number of deicing manuals I've had to put together. They do this for private sites too. And then that green snow pro is, is more of a commercial certification and the state does a course on it, you get certified.
Yeah, UNH does, yeah.
Yeah, so I think it's definitely obviously different when it comes from the municipal side because liabilities are different and stuff like that. But I do think, hopefully maybe we can find something to incorporate. I think we also need to maybe involve the select board to see if the public works needs a policy.
Oh, definitely.
Doesn't, you know, or just guidelines really. You don't have to create a policy, just be conscious of it.
Yeah, part of it is the.
But I think putting it into our overlay district language gives it, gives it muscle.
Yeah, obviously the issue with salt getting into groundwater, you know, it's not removed during normal water treatment methods, so that's an issue. It's very difficult to take back out once it's in the groundwater. The snow pro course that's done over at UNH, I believe, is a, a good standard. I believe the town administrator mentioned that our road agents do attend, attend that. Something that maybe the select board could think about is a permit for, for private, you know, companies that are, that are doing, uh, snow removal in town. They grab a permit and require that certification because again, it's best practices, it usually benefits the, usually benefits the business that's doing it, doing the plowing because they, they actually, by taking that course, they actually get liability coverage from the state. I think a couple million dollars of coverage, you know, so if someone sues them because of a slip and fall or something, because they didn't put down enough, they, they have, they have some defense from, from the state.
It's interesting, I did hear the fellow that you were talking about sue and, and he was talking about his well.
Yes.
And the first thing that came to my mind was Congregational Church, while it used to be a Congregational Church on 156, had a well fail.
Because of salt?
For such a state road and because of the salt. And they had, it, it was before I was even involved, but they had to drill another well. So that was the first thing that I thought of is, yeah, so not just aquifers, but you know, you're on a state road and how do you control that?
Well, I think it, I think, well, our largest aquifer is up by the school and it's tremendous. It has a lot of transmissivity, whatever the word is. But if we don't take care of our own, how are we going to approach DOT to say, listen?
Right.
We all have dug wells.
It's the first step, really.
This is the first step and it concerns me. My husband and I, our house is right on the road, our well is right behind the house and it's 12 feet deep. And, and we get drainage from Dwight, Dwight Road that comes down. So what's the concern for us as well as residents, but.
That's something to look into too, because obviously you involve some of the state roads. They do designate certain areas as low salt use areas.
I read.
I'm not really sure what the criteria is for the state.
In Massachusetts they do, but they do in New Hampshire?
I found.
Maybe that's what I'm thinking of, it's more Massachusetts.
I did find a DOT thing that talked about requests to designate area low salt usage and it had to do with, so I think every board, her, the select board, police chief, fire chief, would have to sign their request and it, but depending on number of vehicles per day. So if it was, I think it was 2,500 and 1,500 were the two. So if it's more than 2,500, I don't think they would do it. 2,500 or less, they, they could do something and then 1,500 or less, they could do a different.
So that's where probably SRPC would have more knowledge in transportation and the things dealing with, because they deal with the state DOT more, they might know that procedure.
I think we're seeing more ice events as opposed to just snow events. So I think, you know, again, there's a balance of what they, what our road agents and everybody can use, you know, whether it be snow or, or ice, so. And there may be investment that the town has to do for like a brine type option instead of, you know, straight salt. Pre-wetting the salt is something else I had read, but you know, again, I'm not familiar with what we actually do for practice, but that, I think it's a good discussion to have with the town from multiple levels and, and then obviously people's water softeners, not using salt water softeners is another big, big piece. I think that was like 20 to 30% of salt loading potential.
I think something, yeah, getting some language in the overlay.
Yeah, it would be good stuff.
Okay.
The, the second thing, if I may, um, bring up to the table is that I've moved forward again with trying to get some signage for our scenic roads. And I've been in contact with Sundance Sign up in Dover, but also with our business office. And Kelly at Sundance and R. Kelly here have been going back and forth and, and built into the proposal is also artwork. And what we have on, on, uh, for digitized is really not a, a nice sharp image. But Sundance Sign will create a sharp image for the town and it's very inexpensive. Artwork if needed, $125. And then the total cost of eight sets of, or 16 signs is just under $800. And they would be medallions, eight to 12 inches, however we decide, and will be affixed to the road sign post. Except on Case Road where it's only part of it is scenic.
That's a reasonable cost.
We could have a bake, we could have a bake sale.
I think you said before, these are, they're like a, essentially heavy duty plastic, right, or something like that?
I think.
Yes.
Backing, but it was, it wasn't just a flimsy plastic, it was.
It was ACM, if you wanted to look at the.
I thought they're aluminum.
Yeah, aluminum plastic, one side, not two sides.
Yep.
Oh, okay. So they're mental ones.
So one on, one on each end as you approach the road. But also a good outreach effort too, so people know that this is a scenic road.
So what did you find out in terms of, obviously we just passed a budget for this year. How is that following, I guess?
Well, I kept John, I kept John Moran in on the loop because he's been on the loop for the last three years and we've been dealing with this for three years. And it's always a money issue. We've got good money.
Yeah, I can, I can.
Might be able to use.
So obviously Mr. Moran, it sounds like he's not the executive anymore, Mr. Bartlett, it sounds like he will be, but I'll reach out to, um, to Mr. Sterndale, our town administrator and.
He's in the loop.
And to make sure that, you know, it sounds like, I believe this board has supported it in the past. I don't, I don't think it can come out of our budget, but.
It could come out of the highway roads budget.
Yeah, I wouldn't see it coming out of the plan.
And if you're going to reach out to him about that, Ed, reach out to him about us becoming official members of SRPC? Because we're still not voting members?
Yeah, that's one of those ones too, that I think they brought it to, wasn't it, it was added as a line item, but then it was pulled out?
It was pulled out by the budget.
But I think, so I think, I mean, unfortunately, I think next time just, you know, want to find somebody who can go and speak to that line item to make sure that it, that's where we fell down. Yeah, yeah.
Time out, just because it was pulled by the budget committee doesn't mean that we can't still do it.
Right.
Oh, certainly.
It's, it's a matter of just the, the, you know, the. Funding the money. Town administrator balancing the budget, so.
Yep.
It seemed like that it was supported everywhere else.
Right.
Just something happened there.
The select board is what it is, so, yeah. Fills with the crack, so to speak, yeah.
That's the town administrator. So Ms. Jones, what we're talking about is, so we, we have not been a dues paying member of any regional planning commission in years. And we are a member of Stratford Regional Planning Commission, even though we're in Rocky County, but because of the towns next to us, mostly we butt Stratford. I think there's other reasons but that we chose Stratford instead of Rocky County. So since we're not paid dues paying members, we do have a contract with them to do, act as a circuit rider and, and do some other contract work for us. But we don't have a vote at the table, like a commissioners vote and things like that for certain items when they actually have the SRPC, the actual planning commission meetings, if I'm speaking correctly. So we had, we had requested based on our utilization of them, our support of SRPC and the support of us, that we become a dues paying member to grab, grab those extra services that we're missing out on and to get our, get our votes. We are, we would have two votes at that point.
Because I believe part of it was, there are different rate uses. So you essentially earn some of that back. It's, or you're using the service, you're essentially getting discounted rates.
And we have a number of things that are going to go up. So we have master plan that needs to be re-reviewed. Very, probably this year, we should start the committee again on that and a few other, a few other items. So it's not slowing down.
Thank you.
Yep. So do we.
So we're seeking to do that again.
We, we're requesting it, yes, based on what we have planned, what we have for utilization needs, yes, we, we think it's a value added item at this point. I think it was a $5,000 or so.
It was three or five or something like that.
Yeah, it's like five.
Yeah.
Well, you have a good point. First of all, the master plan here is that's when we need the most support because one of the biggest things is having good imagery. We're fortunate, we're SRPC in my opinion.
And we will be reviewing the master plan.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, we're up, we're up on the renewal. We're coming up on the renewal period.
Right.
We need to start working on it.
Yeah.
2014.
It should be a bit easier than the last one, because the last time there was a major overhaul done, reformatting everything. This time, we can, could be done, you know, could be a major overhaul again, or it could just be updating of the census data, different data, charts, figures, everything else.
And the good thing with that too is SRPC, in my opinion, has one of the best GISs in the state and they produce some beautiful maps, which I think will help with our current master plan here.
Yep.
I want that benefit.
Anybody, do we want to do a minutes tonight?
Yes, let's do it. Get it off the plate.
We have minutes of 2:09 and 2:23 that were sent out to us. I know it's a few edits, they're pretty minor on the 2:09. Would anybody like to make a motion on that, on those?
Move to approve. Yeah, 2, 2:09 and 2:23 minutes as sent out, I guess I'll put it that way.
A second?
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries five zero. So we'll just go around the board, go around the room, let anybody do updates. Start, Mr. Anderson on my right?
So I'm, I'm finding this kind of interesting. I've always been interested in economic, economic development anyway and so SRPC sent me something as a business owner and actually I still need to do this. Questionnaire, I guess it is, but it's, it's about how affordable housing or not affordable housing affects me as a business owner, my employees and whatever. So I'm, I'm, I'm taking that questionnaire soon, but I thought it was a, a good thing that they were sending out. And it is something I had heard about prior to, so I wasn't surprised to see it. So, yeah, figured I'd just mention that.
Yeah, it's obviously a hot topic and I think a lot of your regional planning commissions are getting grants to find things, but obviously the governor had a statement the other day, the legislature's had things and it's been the news, you know, that, that housing, affordable housing in, in general is tough to come by. So trying to find out, you know, how the whole community's playing for that and everything.
Oh, yeah, especially, I mean, the market in Nottingham.
Well, it's, it's interesting too because some towns go as far as to say, if you do multifamily style, especially rental units, that some towns just place an actual minimum percentage and they'll have an affordable housing overlay. But the town's, I believe the town of Kittery actually requires 10% of units to be affordable per the local, you know, the, the calculation for that community. And in some, but I believe Rochester does this as well. You can actually, you don't want to do it on your project because sometimes it just doesn't mesh depending on the type of project. Developers have the option to, with approval of the council, pay into like an affordable housing trust fund, which works for some of the cities, doesn't really work with housing authorities, doesn't work for somewhere like Nottingham. But a lot of towns are implementing affordable housing minimums for certain types of projects. So if it's apartments, you need to incorporate some part of that. If you're proposing non-affordable. Some people come in and just do affordable housing developments.
Do they, are you familiar, like do those ones also generally incorporate density bonuses too?
Correct. So there's usually if you, I'm not sure how Kittery does it, where they just have a base minimum, but if you do propose affordable housing, you can sometimes get a bonus on units if you bump that up above the minimum. I believe Rochester does have a fairly involved procedure where you can essentially help them do it somewhere else. A lot of towns or communities do that. But the governors, I, I'm not sure if what you're referring to is partly the Invest NH plan that the governor released as part of his state of the state. That's essentially a hundred million dollar plan currently. And that was actually one thing I was going to bring up is that, it, he's trying to tackle affordable housing and workforce housing as well in the state by, essentially it's a hundred million dollar package in his mind. $60 million would actually be for assistance to public and private entities looking to develop workforce housing. I think he used mostly workforce housing terminology. And then there's actually courses that are broken out as, I want to say about $5 million, towns can apply for grants to update their regulations to help better incorporate workforce housing. And then I think even, like there's another component of, you know, there's three, four different categories essentially to help encourage workforce housing, even help cover the design costs for certain peoples. Because honestly, it's hard to make the, the numbers work on a workforce housing by itself. And there's some towns, like I can say, for example, New London, New Hampshire has a workforce housing overlay that covers probably 75% of. And there's some towns, like I can say, for example, New London, New Hampshire has a workforce housing overlay that covers probably seventy-five percent of the town. So, there's not a single workforce housing development and, uh. There, there's some work that needs to be done on the regulation, cause there's essentially some loopholes where it's, it's essentially up to a board to decide, yeah, we can do workforce or not, but. I think it was created in an effort to encourage it, but there's some work that needs to be done that, uh, it still leaves some holes open for, you know, the public to shoot it down. Unfortunately, sometimes it's not in my backyard, but it's a. Unfortunately too, people think of workforce housing and they think they compare it to other lower income options that might be federally backed, but it's, there's workforce housing in every community, whether it's a, a wealthy community or not, it's.
Would these be multifamily units or single family units that we're talking?
You, you can do workforce housing in any fashion, generally it's, um, a multifamily setup, whether it's town home or apartment style, just because the economics of.
Right.
You're, you're locked into a certain percentage of that community's average household income.
Right.
There's a lot of different options out there, but, I mean, we've all probably heard.
But it isn't locked into any particular thing, it doesn't have to be multifamily, it doesn't have to be.
It's up to the town, um, yeah, but certainly some, some towns are different.
If you could decide to do subdivisions that were, had, um, land and, and smaller lots and things, that might be acceptable.
Yeah, you can do that, like I said, just usually the numbers don't work out to make individual units work for the purpose.
Right.
Um, there actually was recently a project in Dover, I have a project that I modeled after it, is actually like three hundred square foot footprint cottages per se. And those are workforce affordable housing units, those were actually developed by the gentleman who owns the assisted living facility, it's over near Durham wastewater plant. And the one on the border there with New Market, he built those, um, to help himself keep healthcare staff. So, yeah, people can't find affordable housing and can't get nurses out of college to come up here and they can't afford rent, so.
I saw that, there's a plan, I think it was eight to ten years ago at one of the, the state, um, planning board, what do you call them, conferences, was that kind of set up, that's.
Yeah.
And, and it's anything really done around here.
It's kind of an in-between where you, I mean, they're spacing only about ten feet apart, but it gives you your individual space, so it gives that feel that I'm not just in a big apartment building essentially, but.
You can solidate parking, they're highly efficient units, so costs are low to, for people, so it's not, you know, really heavy cost of heating and cooling and things like that.
Low construction costs because of the size, you can basically build the panels and put them together, but, um.
At your own pace.
Yeah, we're trying to do that right now in Conway too, there's a huge need up there as well, so. And stuff like that, people, amazing what people get creative and come up with, but. I'm sure we're gonna see more of it because wherever there's available land, you gotta be able to put workforce.
Yeah, Maine, I think just passed a law, or maybe it's, it's up for vote, but it was, I think they were changing some of the, for multifamily housing and things like that, that basically. Saying that the municipality couldn't require more stringent setbacks and things of that nature than would be required for a single family home. So that's obviously in a community like ours where it's wells and septic, we have den, different density standards for, for things for a reason, but, um, I've not heard that coming through for New Hampshire at all.
A very, very small amount of rental property in this town, so it's, yeah, this, this town is a challenge too.
And a lot of times, you know, that type of density, you have to be on water and sewer, so.
Yeah, well, we do have like the, the multifamily conversions, which was trying to tackle two things, was trying to save some older places, you know, maybe like the big sprawling farmhouses. And, you know, get those converted into multi-units, um, is one way to economically save them, but I don't think we've only had one or two takers on that so far. Um, I don't have, uh, I can't think of anything at the moment.
Um, Conservation Commission, we have a, a project, a conservation, um, easement project, P twenty-two, it's small, maybe thirty acres. But it includes frontage on a state protected river, which is always a big concern for Nottingham. And at our last meeting and at our subsequent meeting, we are in discussions on the will of the voters to address, um. Partially paying off the debt for Mulligan Forest, so that's a discussion we're having too. The Conservation Commission, um, by RSA, uh, is the agency that says we will take this much money out of the fund and dedicate it for this project. And then the select board will, will approve or not approve that.
I, I remember seeing that in the Warren article, so that was.
There's a couple of them, twenty-three and then there was another one.
So that might, the funds to pay off that long-term debt comes from the conservation fund or the general fund, I was a little confused as to.
Well, one of them, one of them was money from, um, the feds that came into the town. And, um, that went past for the town to take this money from the feds to pay off the debt. The other one was a citizen petition that directed the select board to take money out of the conservation fund to pay off the debt. But the select board is not, cannot do that by RSA.
Right, which is why you guys need to go do a public hearing within the select board for any of that.
Right, so we're in discussion as to how we're going to balance, um, these things and then, um, have scheduled a, and I don't have it in my calendar here. A public hearing, I think the beginning of May, uh, when we get our Ts crossed and our D's dotted. But it's certainly something that, um, was a, a message from the voters, the residents to, um, assist this, this situation. And taking, relieving us of that debt gives us an opportunity if some other big project comes up for Nottingham to protect. And this, then we have a clean table to talk about that.
Right, being good stewards of a fund, you know, I can see why, keeping some balance in there, cause obviously.
Very important.
Obviously it offsets or it's generally matched, you know.
Matching funds.
More than a dollar for dollar from other agencies, but it, it allows, um, us to, to assist with that as a town. Um, that reminds me actually, so, uh, I'll reach out to town administrator, I'm sure he's on it, but. So if the, one of the, one of the Warren articles was to pay off the debt on the fire station, the debt on that and the, the cost of that was what has justified our impact fees for, for the fire station. So before they pay, pay that off, they would wanna make sure they come before us so we can authorize any remaining impact fees that are there for the fire station to be expended. And then we'll probably have to have a vote to see whether or not it makes sense anymore to have a fire department impact fee without anything, uh. I'll reach out to, again, Chris, the town administrator, see if we can reach out to the chief Viltchuk of the fire department to see if there's any thing that might qualify for impact fees on the agenda. Uh, but if there's not, then, you know, that'd be something we would have to look at potentially, uh, removing.
Cause the impact fee is essentially, it's a separate, it's a separate fee, right, for school?
We have, we have school, fire, recreation.
Yeah, I'd be, I'd be curious, does the impact, impact fee doesn't cover equipment? I mean, obviously that always comes up more, it's only for infrastructure, permanent infrastructure.
Yeah, not for repair.
Uh, well, it can be, I believe it can be for equipment if it's not a replacement vehicle, so like, I think we had that discussion, so when they're, if they're looking at adding a vehicle based on growth, like we needed this additional vehicle. That we didn't have, because then a proportion of it, of that that's being caused by the growth, uh, could be used for justification of an impact fee, but it would have to be, we'd have to calculate that out.
You know, it's curious, cause I remember last year the fire department passed the Warren article for thirty thousand dollars for the, the bunk rooms at the fire station. And I was just thinking, I was burning, I was curious, they just didn't wanna dip into any fire impact fees or, I guess that's the type of thing.
Well, I think our impact fee, the way it was written, I'd have to read it again, was specifically for the, the bond that.
The bond for the building of the fire station, but it was paying about, I looked at like the last three years and the impact fees were paying about half of that payment. So, you know, while, while we're saving some money, we're not saving, it's not like, you know, the impact fees were paying for half of it, so. It's not like it was paying, you know, the, putting the funds towards it was, was reducing the whole amount, the, the amount was already getting reduced just by.
Just getting it off the list for next year.
Just getting it off the list.
I believe, I believe they're, cause I believe they're, we capped the impact fees at time of search of occupancy, I think, or building permit, so. Again, anything that we've approved that may have been subject to impact fees and we said it was subject, I believe should still be collected.
Yeah.
And then that should be used to, so I'll reach out to the town administrator to.
Yeah, it's gonna be a mess, cause it's probably gonna be a little money that has to be given back.
Yep.
Yeah, I'm all set, thank you.
Of course, hi, Mr. Wekin.
Nothing for me, I was actually gonna bring up the Invest NH, so, basically the only thing, I, I think I was gonna, when I have a chance, talk to Blair and see if they're up on that. I, I don't know where it stands with the governor in terms of, obviously you have to fund, fund it from somewhere, um, but I'll be curious to keep an eye on it for things like grants to help update regulations. Because I'm sure SRPC is gonna be trying to go for those as well, so. I believe SRPC announced as well that, uh, they were trying to include us on a grant, right, for.
Yeah, we get a, a document a couple of months ago.
Yeah, there was a new.
Nottingham and another community.
Right, I can't remember what that was for, but.
I think it was stormwater, maybe?
Yeah, I might have, stormwater?
I think so.
I think so, yeah, so, every little bit helps.
So, speaking of SRPC, which I find it's, there's a lot going on there and trying to keep your arms around it and stuff can be a challenge, but, um. So they're looking, New Hampshire DOT is working on the next ten-year plan, um, and so. The deadline for candidate projects, um, to be submitted is May thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two, um, to have it be reviewed and stuff. And I looked at currently the long-range plans for Nottingham is, um. Is Route fifty, one fifty-two and one fifty-six intersection down here to change it to a ninety-degree angle. And that's slotted for happening in twenty thirty-two. Um, and then two longer, they call them vision projects, um, is a bridge, uh, rebuild one fifty-two over North River, but I have a feeling that's the, that got pushed out. Because that, that's the one that they're gonna be working on, right?
That's the one they've got a public hearing, John.
Yeah, that was.
Yes, two-year project.
So that was on the schedule for twenty thirty-three, so that's happening way sooner than.
Yeah, I think it was twenty twenty-four was what it.
Yeah, I think they're, they're, they're in the preliminary stage right now, so they're, they're still in full design, but.
And then the other one was bridge widening, um, during rehab reconstruction to create wider shoulders, um, on one fifty-six over Patacaway River.
Hmm.
Um, so then I looked at, um, so I think we wanna kind of, we want, you know, we wanna think about, do we want, is there something that we want to put forward or talk to the selectmen about? Um, and kind of some of my thoughts that, you know, we might wanna talk about is, well, one, we should get an update from DOT on the Route four, one fifty-two intersection, cause they were asked, they were supposed to do was putting, stop putting out signage.
They were gonna slate to put those like flashing signs or something.
The flashing signs, yeah, so we should get an update from Chris on that. But then my other thought is, is given the amount of development we've got, you know, coming up on Route four with the Nottingham Business Park. And then the huge housing development that's down by, um, Smoke Street, um, and then Oak Ridge that's happening. I'm wondering if we wanna think about the intersection of Route four and Smoke Street and doing.
There's actually been a couple decent accidents in this pasture.
Yeah, I mean, they've got the, the turnoff lanes, but I'm just wondering if there should be something more that, you know.
They also have Hall Road across.
The Hall Road across the way, yeah, yeah, so.
Well, that, that's a tricky one too, because it, it's almost a great candidate for a flashing light, which doesn't take much to meet the warrant for a flashing, uh, light, but.
Right.
It tells them very wide, if you're trying to cross the smoke hall.
Yeah, it's very wide here.
And there's actually, feel, notice, there's a slight skew.
But in some ways it's a little blind too, cause the, the distance come, when they're coming from the Durham area, you're on Smoke Street.
It's like an illusion. Yeah.
You know, it's like, I don't know, so I don't know if it's something we wanna talk about in a future meeting and talk with the board of selectmen about, but maybe talk to the police. You know, about kind of, you know, that intersection or if there's other projects on the state roads that we wanna.
Yeah, if that, so if that's something that the selectmen agree as being a need maybe, then, then I, I think it would be appropriate to bring it to SRPs, you know, and bring it up to their. When, during the ten-year plan, you know.
Right.
Discussions.
DOT is always looking for easy projects too, not just the complicated ones.
Oh, yeah.
Seems to be a.
And that's an easy one.
That seems like it should be a relatively easy one to improve sometimes.
Possibly reducing the speed, that's a fifty, so if they reduce it to forty-five, you know, keep that forty-five through, from, uh, aftermarket basket through that section.
Fifty and then you hit that little two-lane stretch and everybody thinks it's seven miles an hour.
Everyone passes everybody else, yeah.
It gives a seventy mile per hour.
Thirty-five until, yeah, it seems like it's thirty-five, yeah, um, the only other thing to keep on that too, on the list, we've requested that, so. That's a, a state designated bicycle corridor, one fifty-two, one fifty-six, I believe.
Yeah.
So we've requested that they either add shoulders, move the white lines in, the fog lines in a little bit to actually give a shoulder for bicycles.
Right.
Um, and that was during the repaving process and, uh, and they didn't, they, the, I guess the width of the road, they just said they couldn't move it any further. So that'd be something I think we'd wanna keep on that.
Yes, so we sent a letter to the board of selectmen in two thousand and eighteen about that, and I think you resent it to them again this, this, um, past year, so. I think we should, we should again bring that up and, you know, tag those as ones that we would wanna put in. And then, I don't know, we just had a big discussion about salt, and do we wanna think about salt over those aquifer, you know? I mean, I don't know if that would go into this ten-year plan, but, you know, this is not a construction reconstruction.
Honestly, the salt stuff too is almost a district by district basis, because you have the district engineers and the district superintendents who really control that type of stuff, so.
So I think, I think it'd be a fine thing to add, make sure we have it on a, a future agenda, that we just draft a, a bullet list of items that we, we've identified, uh, to assist the town administrator and select board. And further discussions with, uh, road agent, police and fire.
Yeah, okay.
But probably, we probably ought to think about it as what we see first as priorities, you know, kind of list as priorities from our point of view. Might help it to be looked at.
Ms. Anderson, is that something you'd feel comfortable kind of drafting up and follow that?
Yeah, yeah.
And we can, uh, just have it on our agenda for, I don't know, the next meeting if we have time, we'll put it on there at least. Cause I think you said it was May thirty-first or something like that, so we wanna.
I think, I don't think it's a terribly long process to like submit the project.
Yep.
Right.
It's all pretty high level, um, for SRPC, what the format that is.
Yep, so for in consideration of the ten-year plan as well as just the overall planning of, uh, state roads within the town.
Yeah, that's a good point too, that bridge wasn't even on the ten-year plan, but I also know plenty of projects that have been on ten-year plans for the last thirty years, so.
One thing.
Never go for.
I think that one's been on there forever and it just keeps.
One thing I would, um, with the bridge replacement, I haven't been to the discussions as to what they're planning on, on doing for traffic, but one thing I would, I would not wanna see is traffic diverting down Priest Road. Cause that's a, especially during nesting season, that's, that's one of the few areas in town I've ever seen blending turtles, so I know they, they tend to nest, use that power line corridor, um.
I did watch the select board meeting where somebody did mention that.
Yeah.
Because the, the DOT engineer had come in and, uh, obviously I think, cause they were proposing what, like the expedited, what was six-month shutdown, which would be Priest Road, I believe. Uh, police chief basically said that's.
And fire too.
And fire, so that's not an option.
There's no way that road could take that many vehicles.
And that was, that was, and they're, obviously their concern was the response time to that side of town would add almost ten minutes in a fire.
For fire to, to get to that side.
It's a long road, it's a long road.
So that's why they're down to the one-lane closer, but there's still two different options for constructing with that, but it would be essentially two construction seasons, I believe. With, uh, potentially an automated traffic light, you know, those ones you see nowadays, so. That would be for a little while, but it's a good point, you would have obviously locals who know if there's, if you see the stop ahead, people will turn on the priest.
And it might be a good thing, because we have a lot of people that commute through Nottingham to cut out the Lee circle. They go, they come in from the light on one fifty-two and they go right, straight up to Route four.
Take that, take that corner from Route four like a NASCAR corner.
People do most anything to avoid the Lee circle ever since it became a double circle.
Even Smoke Street, so if you're going one twenty-five, Smoke Street's technically shorter, but.
I like the Lee cir, circle now, I, I don't see any backups there every, there used to be backups every day, but it's just. I like the Lee Cir- Circle now, I I don't see any backups there, every, there used to be backups every day, but it's just stay in your lane, that's my, stay in your lane and you're fine.
Right down to using the path, the driveway through the Demulas as a, as a, as a route around the circle.
Well, actually, that brings up a good point, because I don't know, um, you know, kind of thinking about this and where kind of our, well, I know where our jurisdiction ends and it ends at the town line. But, um, you go down to Raymond and you get down to where Tuckaway Tavern is, and you're doing one of two things, one of three things. You're either sitting there for a really long time.
To take a lap, uh.
To take a lap, or you're gunning it and praying, or what I see a lot of people doing now is they're cutting through.
By Walgreens.
Walgreens and stuff like that.
Walgreens, the light.
I got that one.
So, they get to the light.
Yeah, like, I don't know, we as a, as a town write to Raymond Planning Board and say, hey, this is what our residents are having to do. Um, could you guys like put this on the DOT list to put a traffic light there or something?
Maybe, but just, uh, send, sending something to Raymond Planning Board, just, you know, see this as an issue in case you haven't noticed.
Yeah.
I'm surprised Walgreens, you know, um, or the Autozone hasn't complained, because people, they zip through it to try to get to the light at the Irving.
Yeah.
I mean, all three of those businesses, you know, someone's gonna get hit.
Somebody is gonna.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it becomes almost, uh, because I think Raymond House is town, town planner, right? And I know she's reached out to us in the past, but, yeah, it almost becomes a Raymond planning issue.
Right.
Approvals of their sites, so, obviously, there's always something that potentially gets missed, but that probably wasn't thought of.
Yes.
Or it was, and it wasn't deemed important enough, but.
Right.
Some things outside our jurisdiction are, are, not our jurisdiction, but, you know, again, nothing we do here happens in a vacuum, everything we do adds traffic to all the roads that are served by other communities and, um, municipal services and such, too, for for mutual aid, so.
That's a good point, too, like the Smoke Street-Hall Street intersection, Barrington probably is well aware of that intersection as well, so.
Yeah.
Probably, I mean, there are very little Nottingham residents that live on Hall Streets, I bet.
I think that first house is the last one that's Nottingham.
Yeah, the town line's like right there before.
I did find it interesting, I think I saw something, a report from the, the fire chief that talked about response time, because someone, I think someone had asked what our response time was, so if it's during the staff time, I think it was like nine minutes, so.
Eight, like eight and a half minutes.
And if it wasn't, I think it was twenty or something, so.
That was the.
Our town is big, I know, uh, houses around the lake can be almost ten miles from the fire station, so that's a, and we are, I checked with the fire station because I was curious, that we are the primary responders for everything in town. Meaning, doesn't matter if it's closer to Raymond, we are primary on it to respond, so.
Yeah, I think that was essentially the reason behind adding the EMS, the twenty-four hour coverage.
Yeah, it goes from.
It's essentially three times faster.
Eight and a half minutes to on-call averages, it was twenty-two minutes or something, twenty-three minutes.
Yeah, um, so I'm glad they they moved to a couple of full-time people over there, uh, for our town, so, I think that wraps, oh, I'm sorry, Kevin.
I do have a couple of things, um, so clearly it's a slightly slower time, so I have time to actually look at some stuff. Uh, so, I've been going back and forth with Blair, uh, talking about the application for subdivision site plans. Uh, and so I have a question regarding the amount, so the amount of big plans that are needed, like the big, you know, the the large ones. We have it on the, the application, uh, six sets of plans, um, is there a need for that much? Uh, and this is not just coming from me, it's actually coming from, uh, some of the surveyors, uh, because every time there's a change, so number one, a set of plans can be fifteen pages or something, you know? So, multiply that by six, so sitting on my desk will be this massive gun barrel that, to be honest, never gets looked at. I'll look at it, no one, I'll bring them, I don't even bring them anymore unless you guys ask for them. So, I'm trying to, because my understanding is what the surveys tell me is that the clients pay for it.
Yeah.
They're like, yeah, we're happy to, we're happy to print it for you, but the clients ended up paying for it, so that's the, that's the first side. Then the second side is, is when things get changed, I got another set of six plans, and then I just take this gun barrel and just throw it in the recycling bin, you know? So, why I keep, I keep a copy of it, but for the most part, so I'm just trying, I'm just wondering if there's a way we can maybe streamline that a little bit. Um, so that's something I talked to Blair about, you know, whether we can get done it down a little bit. I think the important thing is clearly when everything's said and done, that the town has a copy, the fire chief needs a copy, or or police needs a copy. Uh, and then I put a copy in there in a file folder, um, but it just seems like, I, when I first started this job, I walked in and on my desk, I was like, what is this? And the desk was just full, I finally weaned it down, the plans that are just not needed, um, so I don't know if that's something we can consider, uh.
Do you want more copies? No, I think, I think we can, I think, I think, uh, I think a lot of us operate, because mostly these plans now we get digital, so we have the PDF. So, like for me, I like, I can scroll in and look at that, and then the, uh, the smaller version, eleven by seventeen, I think it is.
Yeah.
I use that mostly, is, you know, you can still color in, get a good idea of 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 everything, um, so I don't know how many we're required to have on file, you know, in the end, but I think we could reduce.
File is generally worn in the planning office.
We usually like to have a set in case the the audience is here and wants to look at a a copy that's, you know, we can have it sitting there, but I think we could.
And I can, truthfully, I can get the same set.
Yeah.
They can give me the set, I can bring it in, da, 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 and then, okay, I take it with me, and then I can put it in, uh, the file cabinet.
What do we ask for eleven by seventeens? It's six full-size, how many?
I think it's ten eleven by seventeens, which even that, like, if guys get stuff to me, like, I mean, that's fine enough, you know, I talked to Chris about it, it's like, well, look at the, in worst cases, if we get it, I can even print it electronically. But fair enough, they're really good printed, that's fine, um, but usually I do, I get those electronically as well for, you know, um, so, because I can print these, I can print eleven by seventeen. Uh, so that I don't necessarily mind as much, eleven by seventeens, but it's just, it's, it's a, I'm always getting influx, some guys will just keep sending, every time there's a small change. It's a whole other setup, and I'm just like, this is an absolute waste.
Yeah, yeah, so I think, I mean, we can entertain that and possibly reduce it and then have language in there that says, you know, additional sets may be required, uh, you know, based on the application and and leave it kind of nebulous.
Don't our site plan regs or.
I think so.
Regs call out how many, so we'd have to make changes to that, too.
Yep.
Correct, it calls it out in the application, right, but then also I believe, yeah, we spell it out again, like the checklist.
I think we spell it out. Yeah.
What I've been encountering is a lot of, because of, uh, this was actually, a lot of towns did change with the pandemic where everything was electronic. Now, there, a lot of towns are requiring a single full-size that generally does just stay in the planning office. And then it's usually about ten eleven by seventeens, and some of those are cities where it has to go to fire, essentially every department head gets one. Um, but I think the most important thing is now just getting electronic for everything, which has kind of been the way now for almost two years, but. And also now we've seen, even SRPC is helping, that we're legally, you can keep records electronically as long as they're stored properly, so. I mean, for us, if they give us a final set that's electronic, it's almost as good as a paper copy, obviously the paper has to be signed, but.
I like having both and and what happens is with, we have our plans, you know, but the MyLAR goes to the registered needs, and that's kind of really where, you know? If I don't have a plan from years ago, I'm like, look, we don't always have them because of, you know, receding, but the registry will definitely have it. So, the most important things are, yeah, a set of plans for us for sure, uh, but and then the MyLAR, those are the two things, but that's, but, you know.
And sometimes the MyLARs, there's only three out of a set of nine that even get recorded, so.
Yeah.
What's the, um, do we usually send like the the town departments, the the large copies, or do they usually like the small copies better?
It depends on what, it depends on what it is, so tomorrow, so like tomorrow, we have, we're trying to get out in front of some of this stuff, too, so to, so we can minimize, so it's, the example, shape up, are you?
Sure.
Uh, they wanna go to zoning right away with, you know, with the building rights and all this stuff, but clearly the police chief, I'm sorry, the fire chief's gonna wanna, you know, wanna get it by him first before, or anything. So, he's gonna sit, he's gonna come and talk to Dale and I tomorrow morning, but I asked if they, I asked them to give me anything that they need shaved. I said, give me anything that you think's gonna be important for the fire chiefs, not just the building item, just anything, just so we can, you know, we can slow down the back and forth and then going to zoning two or three times. I'm sort of trying to streamline some of that, so, uh, we have electronic copies that we'll have for them, uh, we will have, I don't have a plan for them, but this is more like, it's not even really. If we submitted an application, so I think it's, you know.
Pre-application.
Exactly, and I'm sort of trying to get, so when they do get it, it just minimal, it's less of the time that they have to go back and forth and, you know, I'm trying to streamline some of that.
It sounds like we're all on board, it's just I think we have to figure out the logistics of what areas, what what do we.
I'll see what you, what we, what we should like.
Yep, I think that, and then just, we just have to check with Blair to find out, is it our site plan or our subdivision regs and our, probably not our zoning regs, those two.
Just those two.
We probably have to be updated, and I know we could do that by vote, but, um, we probably wanna incorporate it during time where we're making, I think we have some other changes to make in there. So, it'd be a good time, so I don't think it's gonna happen immediately, but I would, I would expect it to be one of the.
If it's on the site, can you?
If it's on the site.
Can you change the application to what we want to be and then just catch up with the ordinance change later, or essentially we'll propose it at the end of the year?
I'm sure.
Because we've been, because we can edit the application at any time.
I think we could be creative on that.
Is that a major change that we have to bring to the voters?
No.
Not subdivision regs and site plan are not to the voters, the zoning ordinance, zoning ordinance is, that's why, so the other item we have on the subdivision regs this year.
You know, where.
Is to create a setback for roads, which is, you know, public hearings, but but no, uh, it doesn't go to the ballot.
I mean, I think you have a good point there, too, and we get these single sheet subdivision lot line adjustments, that's fine as full-size, and sometimes it's better if it's one sheet, but I get it's, you can't really distinguish and say if it's X number of sheets and over, I only want one full-size, it's kind of hard to break that out.
Yep.
But, I mean, I guess, as you know, if somebody reaches out to you and you know it's a single sheet.
Yeah.
I mean, that's a lot easier to handle than a roll of thirty, forty sheets per set.
It really, I mean, it's few and far between when people truthfully ask to look at the plan. I can't tell you the last time anyone's come in and said, hey, like, they'll come in after, you know, all pointed to, you know, our file, but it's very rare for someone to come in ahead of time and say, hey, I wanna see the full-size plan. Or even, again, even coming in here, you know, people usually ask for, worst case, too, is we can't utilize the overhead if needed to, you know, for people's, I mean, that's just a.
That's why I think a one as a minimum is good, and I think everybody's looking at more stuff electronically, I think it's why, you have a lot of butters that see everything and they don't need to come in because they just.
Anything we can do to cut it, I mean, six is upset, it's just too, like, even if it were three, I'd be like, fine, you know what I mean, but six is just crazy.
Would you, would you be okay asking Blair, so just reach out, reach out to the, you know, fire and police and and road agent, make sure that they're, that they definitely want it or not, if they say no, they're happy with a smaller copy, great. Um, as long as the large copy's available, that's fine, and then just ask Blair, you know, what our options are for, you know, just amend the application for now, and then do we have to do a waiver? For anything that come through, you know, just to make it official until we can update those two regulations.
Um, even if I'm just getting the ball rolling on that, you know.
Sure, yeah.
Uh, and then the other thing is, we talked about, and again, this is where I have, I have this conversation, but it's just adding a checklist of the site plan, you know, that's something I'll start working on. And we have zoning.
That's a good idea, too, because we know there's more site plans coming at some point in the future.
And one thing I had asked, I don't know, during, before we reprint the zoning amendments, because obviously we have to sign the new zoning ordinance, uh, to make it the official copy, is, uh, the appendices and such that are in there, if we can update those, I think we can, because like some of those, I think we have the road list where we say private emergency lane, you know? If they're now a town road, we should let, switch it to town, and I think the, uh, there's still, it was an error on maybe scenic roads or some other map that that was giving, I think, the nine-one-one maps instead of the town maps, tax maps. I sent that through at one point, so I don't know if we ever updated it or not, if not, I can find it again.
Mr. Chairman, um, the one that we received last year in the table of contents, the table of contents did not include the stream protection overlay district in the page, so that was last year's.
So, we gotta make sure, we wanna capture that, too.
Did you hear that coming?
It's getting recorded, so.
Stream protection overlay district, just make sure it's in the, in the table of contents.
But I will, but that's, you guys, they're gonna need to email me while we're working on it, um, because I'll get ahold of Blair and just have, I'll have more, but if they accept you guys.
Yeah, so obviously we wanna get that one up, up and running, so that any applicants know that that's the, you know, they have to adhere to those, the regulations that are in there now.
Also, didn't E nine-one-one get voted on last year? They're working on it?
Yeah, they are working on it.
I could change stuff, too.
They'll probably change road lists, because technically E nine-one-one can change a, a road name again, so.
Yeah.
You know, if you wanna keep, uh, I O four.
There's a few things that.
Why do we need to change the road?
Uh, the E nine-one-one system is if you have roads that are, it's not always the case, but if you have roads that maybe are similar in the way they sound or spell, they can, they will actually sometimes just change the name of a road.
Ah, yes.
Has to be very clear and distinct, and a lot of people's house numbers will be changing.
Yes, like there's, there's a stepping stone road in Du- in Durham and there's a stepping stones road in Lee.
That's the kind of stuff they look for, yeah.
And my email, my, by Google Mail does not like to understand the difference between those. Uh, the first time I tried to use it, it didn't, it insisted that I needed to go to Durham, because the stepping stones road didn't work, it wasn't, it didn't exist.
Yep.
Yeah.
And there's a few, few areas in town, I think they talked about making a road or or something, private road, if there's.
Like six numbers at the end.
If there's more than two residences, it's.
How do you, would you handle that with, that, that, my problem was it was two different towns, so there was nothing anybody can do about that, right?
Well, I think Lee and Durham are both E nine-one-one towns, so, once you have E nine-one-one, you can make changes or like as new houses come on board, you, you try and plan for it. But E nine-one-one essentially allows them to continually monitor.
I mean, way back, we had the simple problem that everybody who discovered that Nottingham and Robinwood were the same, wanted to do, wanted to have towns, every road in town named somehow with those myths. You, there's still a level of that now, and they were changing one word in the name and saying, well, it's different, and we had to say, I think at one point I said, we're, we're having no more Robinwood in the town.
Yeah. Yeah, so we'll see, it's kind of out of control, E nine-one's a federal system.
Did you have anything else for us, Kevin?
No, everything.
And, uh, great, is the agenda up for next meeting yet? Okay.
Yes, Chris, what do we have, you know?
Uh, I believe there's a design review, very engineering, uh, and I think she concrete email, uh, not, well, concrete of London, that is.
Yeah.
Uh, email, and I think they're gonna want, pop up to people, so they were continuing to this twenty-third meeting, but I got an email from them, uh, a few days ago, asking, uh, to continue to the next one.
This is for the, uh, for law on Smoke Street?
Yeah.
Okay.
Excellent, well, welcome Ms. Jones to the, to the planning board, as an alternate, we thank you for, uh, stepping up and thank you, everybody, for, uh, for tonight and for putting me in as chair, I appreciate it. And at this point, I think we would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Some move.
We have some move. Thank you, everybody, have a good night.
Thank you.